Okay, thank you. Good evening. We are returning from executive session and reopening the meeting. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance. I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising your hand either in person or remote. And I will notify the public for the Massachusetts Public Leading Laws. Do we have anyone who's making your recording tonight? Your name for the record? Thank you. Harry Fishbowl.
Okay, I'm gonna vary the presentation of this football today. First, I'm gonna announce our law because this is the National Teacher's Day. So I think the whole school committee should give a hand. The other variation has to do with former students in found upon schools. Coming up in a couple of weeks, and that's why I wanted to talk about it today is the Memorial Garden, some of you may have seen it in front of high school. Well, on the day before Memorial Day, each year, the FHS Honor Society hosts a ceremony at the Memorial Garden. That's in front of high school. On the papers that go around the Memorial Garden are the names of Cedar 26 or 27, I lost that number when I went to write notes. Anyways, 26 students who passed away during their years at down the bicycle. People wonder why all those names were not were chosen. It's because they found the high school was opened in 1973. Prior to that had been Lawrence High School. So they, the names of those students are kids from 1973 to the present. Okay, so the reason I'm taking over my football time is so I wanted to tell people, if you know kids that were in the classes throughout those years, I mean, they encourage you to remind the people that the ceremony is taking place and it's open to family and friends and the honor society. I've been for many years. They do it wonderful. They have a musical accompaniment. I think Margaret left last year, right? So yeah.
And can't remember when after many years, so can't remember had died and it was really very touching.
Yeah, it is. So anyway, so Terry, did you review that date? It's the Friday before Memorial Day, except 3:30 in front of high school. Thank you for letting me change my.
Would you like to read a comment or two before we move on?
Sure. You know, the kids are always the best. Okay. This is from Aurora. She wrote, what school do you go to? Mine? That's right. That's correct. Start later and end later, longer lunch. Why is school was, why is school so cold? And let me go on watch. Good points. And this one is from Molly. She's in grade 10, FHS. I like how the teachers try to be funny. And so our mining classes have been good. That's.
Thank you, students. And thank you, Terry. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. To the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@foundness.k12.us. We have any public comment this evening, either in person or remote. You can rise at the table and state your name for the record.
Hi, Dr. McCarthy. I just had something short that I want to say. We've learned a lot and we hope that the committee not only listened, but heard us. As many of those who might have gotten angry speaking at meetings have little kids and that were going off to school and that can be scary if we don't know about potential changes beforehand. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other public comments? Just check over here. Okay. Next on our agenda, Act on Collective Bargaining Agreements for FBA Units A, B, C, and D for 2022 to 2025. And we discussed these exactly the same. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to act on collective bargaining agreements for FBA units A, B, C, D for years 22 to 25.
We actually think of individuals.
I was actually just gonna, I'm gonna think that I feel like we should keep them individual. So scratch that. And I would like to act on collective bargaining agreements for FBA unit A.
One second. Okay, thank you. And we don't have any more remote, which is nice. All in favor for approving the collective bargaining agreement?
Can you do it individually?
We're doing it unit A for just three.
No, I mean the vote.
Oh, sorry. But she has to.
You can just say, yeah. Yeah, you can just have a statement.
You can just ask her.
Yeah. But okay, I'm gonna stay in the vote.
Right, okay, okay. All in favor, say aye. Opposed abstaining. Terry, are you also staying?
I'm staying.
Okay, so two abstaining. Great. And being consistent, would you like to do that?
I will. I'd like to make a motion for collective bargaining agreements for FBA unit B. To approve, sorry. I'll second. Okay, all in favor of approving collective bargaining agreement for FBA unit B? Say aye. Opposed abstaining. Mic. Okay, next for unit C.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the collective bargaining agreement for FBA unit C. All in favor, say aye. Opposed abstaining. And lastly, unit D.
I'd like to make a motion to approve collective bargaining agreements for FBA unit D for years 22 to 25.
And also. All in favor, say aye. Staying.
Thank you.
Okay, sure. Thank you. And thank you to negotiations and thank you to FBA for getting this done. So thank you. Next on our agenda, presentation of LCPAC, which is the English Learner Parent Advisory Council. We have a month of LCPAC here.
Good evening. We haven't scheduled to be with us this evening, but she's stuck at the bridge. So we're gonna do our best we can to translate her out here. So my name is Christine Nicholson. I am an English language development.
My name is Lindsay Barranas and I'm an English language development teacher at Teeticket Elementary in Mullen Hall.
My name is Vivian Navoas. I'm a zero writing student at that school.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Nice to meet you.
Thank you for having us. So we're gonna start off, we're gonna talk about vision of the group. And then yeah, LCPAC stands for English Learner Parent Advisory Council.
And so the purpose of this council, firstly, it's made up of administrators, teachers, and parents. And we work together to support academic success for all of our English learners and our former English learners in the district. And also to help provide opportunity for families, ULDs, and former English learners with the picture, share their opinions to public, found the public school.
So LCPAC, as you said, is comprised of both administrators, teachers, and parents, who are the most important part of our board. And this is a list of our board members. My apologies. It's fine. Thank you for the line. We just started. So that's great. So this is it. And we are who you'll be interpreting for. So just as a polite reminder that we have an interpreter, it's very important that you stop and pause and allow the interpreter time to speak. Yes. So our two parent co-chairs, Eliana and another parent Shay Brown. Our school liaisons. Dr. Laurie George joined our board this year. Henry St. Julian has been working with our parent group for years. Lindsay Barranas, an ELD teacher. Stephanie Frante, a first year teacher with us this year. She's at the high school in North. And myself. I just wanted to give Eliana a few minutes to talk about what inspired her to become part of our board. She joined our board this year.
That it could help my son and all the Brazilian children where be part of this community.
Anyway, they're so fortunate to have that parent liaison with us. They're very, they provide us a lot of information and insight to our community. So they're vital throughout our work. And I just put up this graphic just to show you why we're doing this work. And the important people who part of this work is our students. So this is just a chart. And it represents from 2017 to this current school year. And it's color-coded to represent and reflect the English proficiency levels of us students. So a level one, which is at the bottom, the dark blue, is a newcomers. And then it goes up to, up to level six, who are the proficient students. So as you notice, we ended last year with a population of 166. And we are currently at 215. We've had a recent influx from January to now. So it's our goal to support those students as well as their families. So these are some of the events that our LCPAC has been working on. I'd like to mention that we've had a parent group a long time before the look law, which is language opportunities for our kids came in in 2017. So we took a parent group that we had and we then formed it into an LCPAC according to that law. So we had started a career in college path. It's part of our parent work with our parents for our students in grades seven through 12, before this became an LCPAC. And it includes various opportunities for students to learn about the opportunities at Lawrence School as well as the high school. And two years ago, we took a group to Bridgewater University. This is the first time a lot of us, since they've been on college, get this.
And then this year, one of our parent meetings that we had happened this past January at Morse Pond School, and we called it Dinner Conversations. And we really wanted it to be an informal place for families to come and feel comfortable being in this setting. We had table group discussions. So each table had different topics related to the schools and how they could be part of it. For example, one of the tables was how to help literacy at home. Another table was a peer mentor program that's happening at the high school, sharing the opportunities of that. Another table was social emotional support. And also opportunities for reading and report cards. So really topics that were beneficial to families and letting them know to how they could be part of our program.
Next event, we're gonna do a second dinner conversation. It's gonna be on May 24th at 6 o'clock. And we will have other topics to discuss at the tables. And we're gonna be honoring every year for a few years now, we've honored our graduating covering English learners and former English learners at the high school. We get together, we used to do potlucks, just like that. And we give them a little token of our appreciation of them being part of our community. And they're going to, Stephanie Frante, who's an English language development teacher at the high school, is working with them to create a video. But a lot of them really wanted to attend the dinner and conversation event. So they'll be there and we'll honor them. Eliana, would you please share some of the feedback you received from parents after the generator?
As you know, we had the meeting in January. And after that, I met some of the parents. And they said, we see each other, we help each other in a way that they don't feel alone. They know where to go. They really loved the meeting because it was not a formal thing. We have been other meetings before and it was just one no more. But this one, they did tell welcome. They really enjoy it. They like a lot because they had support. They had an interpreter that could facilitate the conversation with the people at the table. And it really helped them to talk about the problems that children were having at school. And they felt like their wishes were granted. They really felt I participate. I know what's going on. I met two or three parents where they said their children really enjoyed it. They feel like welcome and things make sense for them now. They liked it so much that they said they will participate in all the future.
In our day. And we also need. Questions that you have?
Andrew. Well, first of all, thank you for all the work we do. Seeing those numbers of students that we have who are learning an additional language on top of any of the languages they already speak is just impressive. I'm always impressed by that. I guess my question would be, have you gotten any feedback from the parents on what else we could provide? What are the additional needs that we could help support?
The one is that help with all those, the forms. We talked a lot about that. And so we have, we're trying to schedule a meeting right after the beginning of school in September. Maybe have an all-day event and an evening event if interpreters available to help parents fill out the forms and get, for the secondary families to get their accounts set up on house. So that was a big need that we came away from that night.
I agree with everything that Andrew said. It's very impressive. I'm so glad that this stuff is available. My, my best friend so far, Andrew, she always said she felt that was not her fault and this was not her fault. And I think it's so important for people who come from another country. I'm wondering if there's anything, I realize this is about education and certainly helping, but I'm wondering if there's anything about their cultural moves in terms of at least providing an opportunity for them to, since there's so many students in our school, to display their culture and let other students who are present in the school understand more clearly what resilient culture is like.
I think it's a really good idea. The students feel, they get here, they are a bit of lost. Some of them come just with their mom or just with their father. It's a different culture. They don't know the language. So it's very hard for them. And maybe if we have this culture program, they could show their own culture and they could approach each other and also understand the American culture. And when I talk about show the culture, I'm not talking just about Brazil, but any other country that the students come.
Yeah, just tell them that they are not alone here. Any other questions or comments before, any? Thank you so much for joining us. Next on our agenda is presentation of Hook Squad and update of the knowledge department. Hello, Hook Squad.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm gonna borrow a line from Mary Gann, when she was at the high school. She would always introduce herself as a very proud principal. So I will sit here and say, I'll introduce myself as a very proud guidance director. And my name is Alan Zdarian. I've been here 16 years in the district and I've seen a lot of change. We've had a lot of growth and we've had a lot that we've done, working with students, working with programs in all of our schools. I work mainly in grades five through 12. So I worked with the council that most time, Lawrence, and mostly at the high school. I have to say, we have an amazing group of professional counselors at all the school levels. And even in the elementaries, although I don't work with them directly. We have a very committed group of people and I need your school community to be aware of that, to know that they are out there fighting for found with students, that they're out there working with families. They're out there working in the community. They're working with staff. They're working with administrators. And they seriously hit the ground running from bell to bell in a school day. Oftentimes, not eating lunch or having a bite and running off to a meeting or even lunch duty or doing whatever that they do during the day. And then sometimes after school, following getting a chance to calm down, check for emails, make those phone calls and so forth. But I can say honestly and say I'm very, very proud of all of them to be able to be more. We are all engaged together as a group and as a community. We are very well bonded. We are very supportive of one another. We're very caring of one another. We're very kind to each other and we work well together in all types of scenarios. So we have individualized meetings that I have with counselors. We have department meetings regularly. We have professional development meetings. We had one today. And then we have, they have meetings with Joan as well. We have administrative meetings weekly in all the different schools. So we have coordination teams. So I chair those meetings. So every week at Morse Pond on Tuesday mornings, I go to the high school one on Thursday morning. And we have Lawrence on Friday morning. And together at those, at those meetings, we bring to all the administrators, we bring the school psychologists, the nurse, all of the councils together and we strategize. We look at student issues. We look at students' concerns. We look at school programs. And we try to figure out what is gonna be best to serve our students and what's gonna be best to help our families and what's gonna be best for our school individually. So yeah, those minutes, those meetings will go from anywhere from an hour to 90 minutes. We have councils involved in special programs. I think there was a handout that jumped out on SCL that will show council support in the connect program. So you're familiar with that program. So we have a counselor assigned Morse Pond, Lawrence, and the high school. We have a bridge program to help students with medical difficulties and issues. We have a counselor assigned to that at Lawrence. And we have two councils assigned to that program at the high school. And then we have a newly created gap program that we probably are aware of that's helping students with their credit recovery, helping students with their graduation and earning the necessary credits that they need to stay focused and on path. We also created an assistance program working. to help students earn the equivalency diploma if the diploma is not a real option. So Marjorie Sobo is a counselor connected to that program. And she's working with the students to help them with their pre-tests for ISET, GED and so forth. We have students, a couple of students lined up to complete those requirements. We also have huge community connections. I can't tell you, all the school counselors at all levels. I'll just name a few are working with Common Human Resources, B A Co., Justice Resource Institute, Family Continuity, Gosnell, Duffy Health Center, Wellstone, McLean Hospital, Bright Network, Sharing Kindness with Henry Walters who's here with us today, and local pediatricians, local therapists. So they're on their phones and they're making connection. They're helping families who have food emergencies or housing emergencies or whatever. And they're doing their very best. We're very connected, obviously, to the common children and families. We're very close to with them as well. In addition, we have student programs at school. At each of the schools that councils are involved in, we have social schools groups at huge at all levels. We have school transition meetings, so we work very hard to help the Morse Pond students transition to Lawrence. So Lawrence students to the high school and then the high school is out of high school. We have programs, career planning programs such as Mas D I S that we use at Lawrence. We use now the answer at the high school. We have, we have a huge housing career fair in the fall that we do at the high school. We're going to, we instituted the career fair at Lawrence that we're going to do in June, June seventh. If anybody wants to participate or come and join us, we're certainly welcome the morning of June seventh. We also offer the SAT, SAT, early testing at the high school. We're involved right now in two weeks of testing, one hundred eighty-two students taking eight exams. And it's amazing, we had, I was in the small gym on last Thursday. And we didn't know how this was going to go, but it was absolutely incredible. We had the small tables that we had ordered from when the freshmen used to have lunch in there during COVID. And we had nine students taking geography. And I'll tell you, it went off like clockwork and the kids came back to the teacher and said, he runs that thing like a drill sergeant. And we had Terry organize that all my council councils on board with me. I'll tell you, that went really, really well. And it's important that students have that type of setting and have that type of environment. We also do C education center, which we are there this week and doing testing over there for students as well. And they're having an amazing experience. We have a fabulous mentoring program. I know you're probably aware of. We have twenty seniors who are completing and the next week or two, they work with over eighty students. So these are students at Mullen Hall, Morse Pond and Lawrence School. That they've mentored vaguely every week since, since October. So we've done training sessions, the adjustment counselors at the high school have trained them. I've worked with them weekly and it's amazing to see them go up. It's amazing to see the partnerships that they created in those schools. So Monday, we're going to have a social, a big group event for all the senior mentors, the Morse Pond students. And then the Monday after the twenty-second, we're going to have an ice cream social with all the large students and all the mentors. And that number is going to be seventy. So we have seventy youngsters who will be involved in that mentoring experience at Lawrence on that day. We also have adult mentors that come in. We're very fortunate with the VIPS program as you're aware of. But they work closely with all the councils at the schools to provide mentoring support and then also tutoring support. We have a unique program. You're probably familiar with the college mentoring program. The students who are financially struggling or may not have the financial means for a four-year college. They should only have the ability and the transcript to go forward, but they may not have the resources. So they are assigned an individualized mentor who will work with them for the entire year. So we've just finished that assignment and designation. We, we have nineteen juniors, which is kind of high this year, that have accepted an invitation to be in the program. We will have a mentor group meeting next week. And then we will have a mentor match meeting the week after that. And then we're taking them the week after that, last week in May, to Mass Maritime. They're going to go on their first college tour with their mentors and so forth, hopefully. And then those staff process will begin. We'll continue through the summer with S E R workshops and then we'll continue throughout the fall. We have a huge credit recovery program. I oversee that as well. Where we help students again to get their courses, get their credits. And Callum Murphy will meet him in a minute, helps us with that as well. We have dual enrollment with Cape Cod Community College is huge. We've had over twenty students this past year who are involved in dual enrollment. So they take courses at the college and they get college credit and they get high school credit as well. We've had students that have done enough coursework at the college, getting associate's degree. So we've had students in the past, I don't think we have anybody this year, but we've had the last, last two years ago, we had a student, four students receive an associate's degree and their high school diploma to the dual enrollment program. We have a pathway program with four Cs as well. The students who may not be able to get to the campus, so the campus comes to us. And we have workshops at the high school. We just had one. They did their active place of testing at the high school. They did their course registration. They have one-on-one admissions meetings. So I did one and on this lot. If you look in your packet, you'll see, you have a chance to see a newsletter that we put out. And there's a lot, a lot of information in that packet about all the types of programs that we run, leadership events and so forth and so on. I have to give a few thank yous out, especially to the school's administrative teams to help building a bond of support and connecting this with our school council. Our school council, they're very connected to their school administrators. I'm going to tell you right now, they're very connected. The school administrators depend on the school council and they work together as a great team. I have appreciation to Joan, your leadership and working closely with all the counselors. Adjustments, guidance, help them sharpen their skills, motivate them. And they really challenge this. Joan was with us today. And the guidance council, as we were discussing, Bible for plans and strategies. And then I have to most importantly thank Laurie, do work for her vision and communication with all the school administrative teams to determine staffing issues, to help meet our student needs. As you know, our students are facing numerous crises, personal and otherwise social, emotional. There's a lot going on in their lives. And I'm telling you right now, our team is rocking it. They're meeting with these kids and they're doing everything within their power to help these kids be successful, to stay in school and to do their work. And that's huge. And thankfully, we have the resources that Laurie helped us to provide. And I have to definitely thank all the school counselors. They work so, so hard and they make me so very proud for this.
Great. Yeah, other questions, Terry? I'm not going to move these kids off the hook here now. They can end, so.
Why not, why not?
So when you're done? Okay. I don't know why my head is.
So the hope, so, all right, here's another, so. No, but I want to say. Yeah, Henry Walters is not my job. I met him a couple of years ago, a couple of years ago. We brought him into our lives and found it. And it's been a tremendous match and a tremendous relationship ever since. And out of our relationship, we were able to pull together. And thanks to Laurie's tremendous support and vision, this Hope Squad, so.
They started to do again again.
So I'm so thrilled. I'm so thrilled to be here with you all this evening. I'm here with our board chair, Tracy Taylor, behind me. My first career is as a family physician. Six and a half years ago, my youngest son, Jeremy, just died from suicide. He was a high school junior, Aaron Key. And I realized what I didn't know about suicide as a doc. And I thought, I didn't know, probably most people didn't. And I had this conviction in my heart to, to make a change in our community, in our shared community. And so I started reaching out to schools. And Alan was on the other end of one of the emails and I got to come in and talk. A couple of facts, because we're sitting in the school, the upper school. School connectedness for students is protective against suicide. Being seen, being heard is protected. For our young people who are suicidal, fifty percent of them don't disclose. But when they do, the fifty percent that do, seven out of ten tell a peer. And so one of my questions to schools was, do you have a suicide prevention program for your students? When I learned about Hope Squad, evidence-based, school-based peer suicide prevention. I was so impressed. And I want to say to all of you that Falmouth, talk about rocking it. You guys just leading the way. As other schools have heard about this, I need to let you know that Farmington High School has signed up. Kidcap Tech and Harwich has signed up. And I'm meeting with Monaway tomorrow.
And Born Home today.
So I thank you for being the translator, for having this amazing school and these students. It's a true partnership. We pay for training. You guys did the licensing. It's, it's a true partnership to improve the health of our community. And our young people, and I've talked to Hope Squad members who have, in other schools, are capable of then been able to take their knowledge, it's going to go with them wherever they go. They take it to college. They take it to the workplace. So we're making a positive change, not just at this level, but moving on. So, so thank you for letting me speak and I'm so grateful.
So as you might recall, the last time we were here, we were sort of just informing you that we wanted to do this. And it was from a documentary by Ascension that was from the Gombe High School. And Joan was there and Laurie was there and Mary was there and Tom Mack was there at the time and Alan was there. And it was like this little seed that, oh, I can remember sitting on the stage and like I was so lit up and they were all lit up. And I was like, we can do this at Gombe High School. And Laurie was like, we're doing this. And it just, it happened. And it has been the most amazing journey this year with Hope Squad. So we're just going to share a little bit about what we've done this year and introduce a couple of people. So I'm Katie Powell and I'm one of the advisors and Siobhan and Lane is another advisor. And you want to introduce us?
Hi, I'm Nikki Shig. Courtney, you want?
I'm Tyler Verken.
So there's five of us. And the officers are Jack Collins, Hannah Birmingham, Julia Rome and Maggie McManaman. And the three people that are here to speak tonight with us.
I'm Victoria Pialio. I'm fresh.
I'm Maxwell Gianni, junior.
I'm Hannah McCollough. I'm a freshman.
So it all started in October when we all participated in our advising training, the five of us. We were taking Q B R, which is question, persuade, prefer, which truly can save lives. And it is very research-based and not about suicide. And that was in October. Then I'm just going to give you a quick overview. In the November, we presented for staff. We informed the entire staff and student about what Hope Squad is. In December, we nominated, the students nominated peers to be Hope Squad members. That was a huge school process where everybody was involved. We had families out there. Do you remember? The number was like astonishing.
Return?
No, everybody that voted, yes.
Yeah.
It was.
Seventy percent of students.
Yes. And we, the advisors, we, students love when adults embarrass themselves. And actors, we were all in the whole year, who's wearing weird outfits, doing weird little skits and just acting like goofy posters that we don't really care about.
We are.
Kids watch and they listen and that hooked them in. And they all, they all nominated their peers and that's where the group came with them. That's the brilliant part of this. Yes.
Well, it's great because it also hits on different like groups of kids, right? So you have kids and all from all different ages, all different things they like to do. And now they're all targeting and we have a list of like, these are the people in these groups that people look up to, right? So we have a kind of useful list of names that we kind of hold.
Every sub-group in the school is represented. January was our first meeting with the thirty-two members of the squad. We informed parents about permission. In February, we appointed the officers and then the students themselves participated in the Q B R training. We were all at the Goose Pet Rally for about a week or we took that long. And that's when we started really showing who everybody was in the squad to the school. March, many team-building activities within our squad, with all the students on squad. The importance of connection from all the different sub-groups is so key. So we've seen as advisors, the, all of them become like closer and closer. We're only, we're meeting every two weeks and we're like, this is enough. So now we meet every week for thirty minutes. And we can see over time them all, like knowing each other's names and interacting more. And some of them told me that, oh, we can say hi to each other in the hallways, when we were never friendly before. So we're in different corners socially, you know? April.
So we're currently going to be a part of Suicide Awareness Walk this Saturday, fifth one, May twentieth. It's hosted by a sharing kindness and it's taking place in Iannus. As a Hope Squad, we're taking a bus on Iannus. And so I participated to raise awareness. We're all going to be wearing our Hope Squad T-shirts. And we also have an open invite to any of the F H S community members that want to join.
Sharing kindness bought us all these lovely T-shirts. And we also, it's interesting, we realize the importance of home monitors and the office staff wearing these. And how, and people at lunch duty, the guidance, the other adjustment counselors, the staff, the students seeing that all the staff that are on the, that you can see publicly in the schools are all invested in this.
They made me wear this shirt four times last year.
There's a second order going in, so they, everybody is covered. And I want to say, not only are you attending, thank you for your job. The Suicide Awareness Walk in Iannus that we host, which is our big fundraiser that lets us do projects like this. You're leading it. So Hope Squad will be leading about, last year, just over four hundred walkers. I think we're going to be close to five hundred this year.
And then also in April, we started planning our school-wide mental health awareness activities. As you can see, there's a mustache being grown right here. Alan Harris. Who's the sports team? It's the Chicago, no, it's San Francisco. Do you want to share a little bit about that?
I'm a baseball fan and I'm a San Francisco Giants fan. And two years ago, I believe, there was a young man who was in the minor leagues who actually attempted to take his own life and he was suicided and shot himself and survived. And in recovery, was able to make his way all the way back and he came to spring training. And out of that, his story of the loneliness of sharing those pieces, the team really kind of bonded around and he ended up getting the chance to have one game in the major leagues. But out of that, the players of the San Francisco Giants decided that for mental health awareness, they would do Mustache May. All the players of the San Francisco Giants do a mustache in May and do a, and do a fundraiser out of it just to raise awareness. They also had a good hitting streak and went on really well with that. So when he, but we chatted and the kids were talking about ideas. We talked about mustache may. Yes, there is a reason. Some people are not intended to have a mustache.
So the students are, you're, you know, getting out around the school community on the morning views and making everybody aware that it is this mustache challenge for the month of May. Along with many activities, do you guys want to talk about the activities of Maggie that we're doing in school? Do you want to talk about anything in the first one? You know, the first one with the table. This one, you want to talk about?
So last Monday, we had a bunch of some paper on all the cafeteria tables. We asked the kids to put the phones back, have a conversation and find the most common fact that they all share. And so they filled up these paper and the Hope Squad collected. And they walked to each cafeteria and shared what we were doing as a group, which the ownership falls on them, which is awesome. And we compiled them and with the, the most interesting fact, the most unique fact, that David got a piece of a whole pie, pizza pie, thank you, Doctor. And it actually brought a sense of community and laughter among the advisors, among the kids. And to see the kids at lunch tables without their phones out is like the best thing in the world. So kudos to those guys for coming up with the activity.
Every single lunch table, two ways, every single table participated. At some, at different levels, it was amazing. And then the next Monday.
Yeah, our most recent activity from this one day was we put out even more sheets of paper on one table. This time, each student at the lunch tables were instructed to take a piece of paper and write down something that they were hopeful for or made down. they were hopeful for or made them hopeful. And what we did is we took all the pieces of paper and stapled them together in one big chain. And it ended up. Yeah, we're planning to hang it up. And it was just a really good way to, like, further that, um, like, thought of like mental health awareness and stuff in the student bodies.
And the staff had done it at one of our staff meetings. Then the students get to add on to the staff, um, links. And then that's.
Uh, so next Monday, Monday, everyone up and coming, we'll be doing a clothespin challenge. So basically, this last week's meeting, we worked on over eight hundred clothespins with either compliments or motivational phrases such as like, keep going, you're enough, you're loved. Or like simple compliments like, you're amazing, you're beautiful. And we're gonna give every single kid a clothespin on Monday. And even if one person's day improves from getting that clothespin, that's enough. You know, we made at least an impact on one person's life, but I think that it will help a lot of people.
And on the morning news, um, every Monday, the students are sharing and they're debunking myths about suicide, which is huge. They're changing their language. We don't say committed suicide, we say died by suicide. And it's not gonna put the idea in someone's head, ask them if they're suicidal. These things that students are learning every week from the morning news from new students, it's amazing. And this is a picture of a bunch of kids. And this is just a little clip of the morning.
Oh, wait, hold on, hold on, hold on.
You're good.
Hey, guys, new look?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maggie, I'm so glad you said that. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. And we, as the Hope Squad officers, are encouraging all students and staff to participate in Mustache May, where you will grow the best mustache you can, and the winner will be honored and notified.
As a Hope Squad, we'll also be hosting weekly lunch activities every Monday during both lunch waves. Today, we want you to talk to the people at your lunch tables and find the most interesting fact that you all share. Write it down on a piece of paper with all your names and your favorite pizza, and hand it to one of the Hope Squad people that are walking around your lunch wave.
We will also be debunking myths and sharing other important facts about regarding mental health. Our first approach in debunking the stigma around suicide is to change our language around the topic.
You will commonly hear people saying committed suicide, which implies that the person committed a crime and that suicide is a selfish act. Instead, we should say died by suicide to strip away the shame element.
Thank you, guys.
So that's, all of that, but really from the bottom of my heart. And I have to say that after the suicide forum on, um, March twenty-eighth, you know, we've got so many calls about Hope Squad and about the break program, which also comes from high school. And all these schools are saying like, you guys are leading mental health on K-Cod. And it is, as a counselor, this is my twenty-third year of being a patient. It is such an honor to work for this, from the bottom of my heart. So thank you.
Hope May, any questions or comments?
So, um, I love that you, you are bringing attention to mental health and all things. Bringing it to light. I feel like it's, uh, in our society, it's not always the easiest thing to talk about. But I love to hear that, um, Hope Squad, Hope Squad is out there and it's being received with such welcoming remarks with the student body. To hear Dr. Harris say that seventy percent of the student body is voting on things put out by Hope Squad is amazing. I, I think, you know, um, there's something to be said for that. I love that there are snippets put out on the morning news by students, by your peers, to talk about, um, things that are, you know, debunking myths, changing the language, really putting it out there that it's okay to talk about. It's not, uh, something terrible that you swallow back and you put it in the back of your head and put a smile on. No, if you're hurting or you need help, it's okay to ask. Um, and then forgive me, what's your name? Yes, you.
Uh, Max.
Max. Max talked about the clothespin that you guys are putting out. So, um, I, uh, worked during COVID in a, um, in an ER hospital. And we received, uh, little Hope badges on all of our lockers one day. And I think all of us still have them on our lockers. And when I tell you that when we walked in uh, and saw them all there, it brought a lot of us tears, not just like, um, we, we felt like we were seen and we were heard. And honestly, they've been sitting there for almost three years at this point. And even still, when we walk in and you see those affirmations like, you're amazing, you're beautiful, you're enough. You matter, you, you know, you have a great smile, you know, whatever. It matters. If people see it, they hear it, and you know, I can't applaud this enough. I wish that we had Hope Squad in society. I love you all for being pioneers. Thank you for reading this, Samantha. Thank you, Dr. Dirk, for, for doing this. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just, um, echo everything. Um, thank you for everything that you do. And, um, it's very difficult to measure prevention. It's very hard to know what didn't happen because of your efforts. And I heard the word connectedness earlier. And the majority of people that I have worked with that were in crisis, it wasn't that they didn't feel connected with an individual, it's that they didn't feel connected with a group, an institution. It was the disconnection from the school or the community. The government doesn't care. It's, it's, it's bigger than just an individual. And I wanna encourage you that, um, even if someone doesn't come to you directly, just by knowing that they're walking into a adorable place that has something like this, I believe that you are creating that connection. Um, that, that a student can at least feel like they know that if things go really bad, there are people around. Uh, even though they may never even say a word to you, it, what you're doing is, is incredible. And having seen both sides of bad days, um, I wanna thank you very much for all of your.
Margaret, three things. First of all, I wanna thank you. You know, people who have a crisis often don't really, they wanna solve it, but they don't really find out what the cause is. And so that you're able to identify and to know that it was really students talking to students would be most helpful. And that is wonderful. And I thank you for that. Secondly, I wanna say is that you're also normalizing your mental health. And that is so important. The mental health is gonna sting her for so long. And it's so gratifying that all of you will not just be here in your school, but you'll go on to college, to all, whatever you do when you're going to work and you don't like it, we'll be participating in that. And you, you all deserve it. All of you need to deserve it, gratitude. And, and last of all, it seems like you're even creating community for all students. And by creating community that just helps people not to feel lonely. And so that, that is just wonderful. And thank you all for.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, really, really wonderful.
Outstanding.
Any other questions or comments from the school committee? Thank you. Oh, yes.
I just wanna thank everyone for loving us coming here. I gotta go, but, uh.
And ten years apart, and ten years apart, or you're coming state ground now.
Next on the agenda is the first grade of policy, J I C, student discipline, Mary.
Yes. Um, so first, can I say I'm glad my mustache is in vogue? Um, so just by way of some brief background, there are in Massachusetts generally three statutes that govern student discipline. One is National Law Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven H. That deals with dangerous weapons, people substances, and assaults on staff members. One is National Law Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven H and a half, which deals with students charged with felonies. And one is National Law Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven H and Three Quarters, which deals with everything that's not covered by Thirty-Seven H and Thirty-Seven H and a half, which is the vast majority of students' clinicians in our school. And that statute, which actually was adopted in, in two thousand and fourteen, was just amended. I think we spoke about this before. It was amended in, it took effect in November to require that before suspending students, administrators must consider alternative remedies as opposed to suspension, unless the alternative remedies would be considered unsuitable or counterproductive, or they're not an option because they would, um, the student's continued presence in school creates a, a, a serious concern about the infliction of serious bodily injury or other serious injury. So we just had to change our policy to reflect that amendment. And the first highlighted section there does basically outlines that, um, parameter that administrators must follow. That statute, that, that amendment does not apply to emergency removal. So the next highlighted provision that you see just indicates, regardless of the amendment, uh, administrators still can still emergency remove a student. And that's when they have a concern that the student's continued presence really poses a risk and danger. The only other change is towards the end, you know, we added the legal reference to throw the update of the amended statute. And then there's a note that clarifies that this amended statute does not apply to offenses that are covered by Thirty-Seven H or Thirty-Seven H and a half. So that's an enough job. We had to do it to comply with the new amendment. And it was a pretty, pretty easy fix. And all the administrators have been praying on the new discipline law and have been enforcing it accordingly.
Great, thank you, Mary. Any questions? I have a question about, um, because it's, it's all word, and I, this is not the change at all. All worded as the principle. Now, if, but you have the principle of not, like, there. Shouldn't say the policy or appointee or.
It can say or designate. It doesn't, so under Thirty-Seven H and Three Quarters, it does not have to be the principal. And it, it can say principal or designate. It's always just been worded that way. And the statutes tend to be worded that way. Under Thirty-Seven H and a half and Thirty-Seven H, the principal actually has to be the one to impose the discipline. But Thirty-Seven H and Three Quarters, any administrator, principal and principals are the ones. We can certainly change it to say or designate. It's just traditionally worded as principal, but it definitely is applied to allow for any assistant principal to engage in this, in the discipline.
Okay, yeah, just making sure, if we're in a situation where.
Oh, yeah, no, it doesn't, it doesn't define, it's just the principle.
Carrie. And Mary, this kind of snuck in on some other laws, right?
Yes.
And Mary, why are you so glad? Very smart. Found it, just reading through something else. And the thing that you, I wanna bring out with so many things the state does. They make a mandate, but they, it's unfunded, these unfunded state mandates. Because they might have offered some more financial assistance to, you know, educate staff. And, you know, I think students too might need a, you, you just get a little touch of that too would help, but anyway, so just in addition.
I, I know that when this came out, um, and, and this popped up at, at the time too, it specifically talks about um, assault on staff members.
The amendment does not.
No, no, but the, the, what came down from Desi, I think it talks about, you, you, you even said yourself something about.
Yes, the, the other statute that deals with assault on staff members.
Right, right. And I, I think a lot of people understood that the, I, I, I know I did as well, that, um, they were saying you cannot suspend a student for assaulting another student. Can you clarify that?
That's fine. So there's Thirty-Seven H, National Law Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Seven H. A principal can suspend a student for having possession of a dangerous weapon, a controlled substance, or assaulting a staff member. They do not, they're not confined to, we have to try some alternative remedies first. An assault, student-to-student assault, absolutely, that falls under Thirty-Seven H and Three Quarters. Administrators can still suspend a student for that. They just have to document under the new statute that alternative remedies would not, would be unsuitable, would be counterproductive, or the student's continued presence in school causes a fear or her infliction of serious following harm. As long as they document that, they can still suspend the student.
Thank you for that, Claire. And I appreciate that.
Any other questions or comments?
Mike. Can I just piggyback on what Bill just said? And I, I'm sorry. The documented pieces, documented by the school, does that mean that they have to try one of those methods and just to document that it's not gonna work?
They can document, they, one of two things. They can document, you know what? We've had other disciplinary incidents with, with the student. We've tried alternative remedies. They are not working.
Okay.
And, or they just decide, in this particular situation, we do not think that alternative remedies would be suitable or productive, or the student's continued presence poses a serious concern for us. They do not have to, absolutely have tried an alternative remedy. It's strongly encouraged. But as long as they can document, we've decided, unsuitable, not to, counterproductive, or continued presence is a concern, that a suspension is an option.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, the school committee will take up, um, to act on this policy, J I C, at the next school committee meeting. Next, act on three thousand dollar donation from a doctor, asking for T-ticket elementary school in four years.
Uh, thank you. So this is exciting. Our local Atlantic Subaru, uh, went through, uh, the adopt, uh, classroom uh, organization, uh, and adopted T-ticket, uh, elementary. And so.
Yeah, well, no, I was just. And, um, yes, this is true. It was pretty exciting. I was a little skeptical to receive an email that said, you know, you are the winner. Really? I, you know, I didn't fly for it. Um, so I did some investigative work, which is important. Help make sure that I wasn't getting scammed. Um, but no, they, um, Subaru uses this organization to, um, vet their donations. And, um, the local Subaru dealership, the Atlantic one in, um, Born, uh, the representative just did some Googling and she found the T-ticket school and decided it would be a great candidate for the three thousand dollars. So, um, the way they handle it is that they would have to choose, um, six teachers. Each would get a five hundred dollar credit. And it's, so it's different than, um, um, they don't get the money per se, they get a link to the, um, the organization's marketplace. And then they can purchase the materials through them. So. So it's really simple. It's just, if, if we choose to accept it, that's it. And then we can move forward. So, um, so I'm asking your approval for the acceptance. So we'll have a motion and they'll open up for questions and conversation. Great. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. Two things. Thank you, Atlantic Subaru. You're very generous. And then, thank you. Um, so it's not cash, it's a link to the organization marketplace. What might those six educators find on that marketplace?
So that's an interesting question, because that was another thing that I was like, there are marketplaces. To, um, companies that we typically purchase, um, products from, like Lakeshore, School Specialty, Staples. Um, Subaru did ask that some of the funds be spent on STEM, um, not like a particular dollar amount. So it's all very difficult, yeah, all of them. That's great. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor of accepting three thousand dollar donation from a adoptive classroom for T-ticket elementary. Say aye.
Yeah, same thing myself, thank you. Okay, next is presentation and act on superintendent summative evaluation. Yeah, all right, so, lost some kind of chairs. And you're gonna be my. All right. So I thought this was, so I know it's the last little reading. To the presentation of Dr. Dorr's superintendent summative evaluation. So I'm gonna, let's look to the next one. And I just want to go over just the terminology, because it, it does get a little confusing with our evaluation system from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Goals are rated differently against standards, they don't use the same terminology. So that just shows, you know, we have the, the ways that goals are rated and then the ways that the standards are rated. So, and to make things even more complicated, you know, there's different number amounts for each rating, one has five, one has four, and they both end with E as the best, so exceeded or exemplary. So it does not make it an easy process. There are also some other confusing things, so I'm gonna walk through as we look at this. So this I went over, I don't know, a month ago? The, the process, so this is just a graphic showing that the evaluation cycle of a superintendent is ongoing. So even at, that we are at the end for the summative evaluation, this then will lead to Dr. Dorr's self-assessment and then start the process again for the following year, and it will go on and on. Um, so now we're gonna look at the results of the compilation of our nine individual evaluations. So as a founding public school, school committee member, one of our very important jobs is to evaluate the superintendent on goals and standards. And so we, what we do is the subcommittee, the evaluation subcommittee comes together after we've received all of the evaluations and we compile the results. So it's just looking for the number, for the rating and putting the numbers next to the rating. So here you can see the red numbers are the number of evaluations that rated that way. And then the green is where the majority of our ratings were. So nice, Terry helps with the visuals of the color there. So having the green shows the progress for the goals. So we have the professional practice goal, the student learning goal, and the district improvement goal, that's there. All right. So then we have our overall standards. And the way that we get to the overall rating is a little confusing because it sounds further in our evaluation when we look at the indicators of each rating. So overall, these were our compiled ratings for the different standards. So again, you know, you notice that there's the different ratings here, the unsatisfactory needs improvement, proficient and exemplary. And you can see the majority of where the majority of our numbers are. And the green writing there shows that the proficient, proficient needs improvement and proficient. Those were the overall rating numbers where the majority of the, the individual evaluations lie. Lay, what? Rest. Rest. They were, that's where they were, they are, yeah. Um, so the comments are, are attached to our individual evaluations. And they are available as public record once we vote on every time. So that is just that part. Then to make things super confusing for all of our next school committee members coming on, is there's actually another section of the same thing we did in the beginning of rating the goals, but in different order, just to confuse you someone. So you can see that this is just, again, with the green writing showing the ratings, but this mirrors that first page, you click back to that first page. There we go. This is, this is the document. So if you are in the public and you are going to look at this document, just to give you a heads up of what the confusing parts could be. And you can always go back and watch this again. All right, so the next, the next section is where we dive into each of the standards. So this is our first, the first standard that you saw the overall rating for, and this is the instructional leadership standards. And again, we can see where the, the number of individual evaluations were. And then overall, the rating at the end with proficient in green, and that you can see that. That's, yeah, overall, okay. So now we're gonna go to the next one. And again, we break down the, all of the indicators for standard two. And then you see the overall rating emissions. And then standard three, then the overall rating. And then this, you know, standard four, professional quarter, and the overall rating, a lot of the breakdown. And then, oh, that's it, that's it, that's how it was. You didn't show the final results, the overall for everything. Yeah, the overall, everything is on the first page. Just to make everything confusing. So the overall for everything is, oops, so here's the overall for the, the goals. And then the overall for the standards is the next page.
Right there.
Yeah. Yeah, so even though that, that's step one and step two, we actually have to go back to those first steps to be able to go and go back. Yeah, so for you guys who made it through your first evaluation, you did it. Thank you, Leah.
Any questions or comments? Andrea, I also want to start with a question, or maybe two. And if we go back one, so when we're doing the analysis parts of the goals and we have a spread, I can see that the parts that were put in green is the most, right, it's the, the most. But it's a weird scale, because it's not a true Likert scale, where you could say there's things on both sides of neutral. There are, there's met and exceeded, and then there are three different things that are saying you're not yet met yet. So if you, you might have a number that I see as four, but yet there are five to the right, to the better side of the scale. So I guess I'm trying to understand the statistical analysis part of this and how that's done.
Yeah, there's no statistical analysis on this. This is just how we've been doing it, but this is, this is the first time we're showing where all of the numbers are, which I think is a really nice way to show it, so you can ask those questions and you can see where people were, were rating. But yeah, no, it's just always been where is the highest number, and that has been. So I would say for fellow school committee members in the Dr. Door, if there is a different way you want to do this in the future, it's a conversation to have.
Yeah, I guess I, I would probably encourage that conversation, because I get we're working with, you know, what we're given, but when we're looking at it, there's more that we can mine from that in terms of where the total numbers fall, as opposed to just what, which category got the highest number, right, that's not really reflective, if that makes sense. And I think that, you know, we've all been doing this, you know, multiple times, and we have these conversations, so it's hard for us. And I think it's also hard for the public then to interpret this when they're just seeing what we're presenting here. And it's a little bit more complicated than that. And I guess the other question I wanted to add.
Can I, can I just go a little bit more about that?
Yeah.
Do you remember me sending you emails that said, I contacted M A S C for guidance in this? And their answer was, you, you picked the total by preponderance, do you remember that word? So, and they gave, they gave, there's a bunch of different scenarios. I even watched a few observations by Dorothy Presser on the website. And if, if there's, as long as you start out and say, this is what we hope works, and you look back at what you've done over years, and this particular preponderance, if that's a word, method worked. So you might, there are other things you could do, I mean, anyway, so.
Yeah, I guess that's what I was just trying to clarify.
We did get, we did ask Desi to, you know, give us some formulas, but they are in with this preponderance word, so anyway.
And then the, the next part I wanted to just try to bring into the discussion a little bit is when we're making assessments on these multi-year goals and the, the way that you're looking at things about meeting them and the way that the goal is written versus, you know, significant progress might just be, well, it's, it is a multi-year goal. So somebody might look at it and say, well, it's not finished, so that means significant progress. Someone else might look at it and say, well, the, the goal says to implement, and some things were implemented, so it was met. So interpretation of what those words mean could change things. So I just want to make sure that people are aware of that as well, is the interpretation of what that language means. It is important.
And again, I would say that, you know, moving forward as, as a school committee and with Dr. Door, having those conversations early on in the cycle to make sure that you guys are all in agreement about the mapping. Because when you have multi-year goals, significant progress is what you want to see, right? So you can't meet a goal that can't be met in one, one year, right? So you have.
Like if it said that you're gonna work with principals and leaders to carry out, like if you've done that during that year, haven't you met the goal? Even if you're not done doing that work. I mean, we have evidence of it being done, right? So I hate to say that you can't meet a goal, no one would want to set multi-year goals then, because you're always gonna be failing to meet them.
I wouldn't, well, not like working towards the goal.
Then we should say that the standard that you want is significant progress, not meeting. And then, but knowing that, that significant progress is the standard, and it has been achieved, is different than saying met is the standard and it has not been achieved.
Okay, do you have language around that for multi-year goals that reflects, because they're different?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I do believe that that's why there's those five ratings instead of the four, you know, the, it is a different type of rating that you're giving a, a goal and a multi-year goal, you would.
I'd like to make a comment, but I think it's fair to circle back on Leah's original comment that this is not an easy evaluation form to do. And that Terry did reach out to M A S C and Desi to get guidance. And we can, aren't sure about this, but the only thing we can do now is move forward and figure out how we can tweak this for multi-year goals or different year goals we'll have you. Because it's just not a baseline, it's not an easy document.
No.
In one of that, and it's always subject to interpretation.
Yeah. And, and I think that's important for everyone to understand is that the form that we use, now the, the goals, the wording of the goals, that is something that is done, you know, district by district. The form itself, I mean, on every page in the upper, you know, corner, it says, you know, Mike Last. The Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, this is, this is not a form that the county school committee came up with, this is a form that the state came.
Yeah.
But, but this is, this is what we're given and we know, we don't, it's not something we created here. Don't that to be different and possible or the same direction, you know, more, it's.
Any other questions or comments, Margaret?
Yeah, I want to come, first I want to apologize, because I reread my thing and I was writing it quickly before I left for vacation. And there's a terrible grammatical errors, but I apologize for that, and now I know it's gonna be a big document. Okay, the first thing I want to say, and I'm gonna say it quite clearly, is I'm a very strong supporter of county school and her new shift as superintendent of the county school system. And I also want to reiterate and thank you so much for that certification, because that is a very good certification, Andrea. I want to talk about the difficulty I experienced as a new school committee member. We're responsible for finances, we're responsible for policy, we're responsible for hiring and firing if I wish as superintendent. And so I really didn't know, I, all the training I went to wasn't very helpful, but actually I went to the summer retreat. And Leah Palmer said at that retreat, that our responsibility is to make sure that Dr. Dorr is the best superintendent with a good custody. And I took that as my direction, and so I thank you for that. So from then I'm going to continue. And so my role is to really see that we set the policy, but the Dr. Dorr follows those policies, and that's what we evaluate her on. So my opinion is going to be based on my experiences and what I've done. So because I'm new and because I'm retired, I have had the benefit of being able to attend almost anything that we've been inviting to. I have done tours of the school system twice, once on my own with Dr. Dorr and once with the finance committee. I've attended, I've been meeting teachers, principals, students, and we've been in those classrooms among those schools. And that's what I think is important, this too, and I had been overwhelmed by the school that I had seen. I've attended committee meetings and, and later on I'll talk about the fact that I'm on the wellness committee. And my position on wellness committee is the social, emotional component. And I'm the only member from the school committee who's attended that wellness committee. And by the way, I can't imagine how many of you folks work on the committee and have full time jobs. Okay, so I'm fortunate. Okay, so my, my opinions are really based on the evidence of all of you above. Okay, social and emotional area. I feel like it's something redundant, you said it all. So thank you.
So maybe just a high level comments related to Florida.
Yeah, and social and emotional. And in fact, you know, we assign more adjustment counselors, gap counselor, all of our students graduated last year, you talked about that, and higher than that, that concept we said earlier. Expanded bridge program, the assessment tool, the continuous support for common choice, the VIM program, the clinical pause, preventive intervention is necessary, working as better set is a focus one, which we heard about and how fantastic it is, hiring someone to real work with adjustment counselors to deal with additional trauma, and the health proficiency of all staff. Hiring a connection now with behavioral health innovators, compliance, compliance with law, with regulations. Expanded partnerships, and this is really about student awareness, partnership, access for all students, hiring a full-time creative teacher, and that has in fact provided opportunities, if any of you went to see MoMoMoo. It was outstanding. And I'm gonna tell you, I went to the Family Theater Sunday after seeing MoMoMoo on Saturday. That was good, favorite, it was fantastic, okay? And so the, the appointment for the, the recommendation for. The, the appointments or the, the recommendation for physicians have really been threefold. Number one, they're always for students. This position will help students. Uh, so that the KIAA full-time person, uh, the expanded partnership. Provides access to students in, in the community, which is so exciting. And also KIAA. And I've been to the art presentations for media presentations. Those are so important for social, global students. We're there for academics. Those different programs, you are students together and that is what that is what it was, was all too powerful to do. And uh, the other thing is hiring someone for lawyer.
And then I, let's wrap it back to the evaluation.
Okay. Did the whole switch. Okay, safety. Power and halftime safety, no coordinating effect. Uh, there's a retired officer, you can only work at halftime, overtime. The safety, right?
Yeah, so if you could sort of summarize your thoughts in terms of.
Safety monitors, um, um. She received an award for Susan Moran, because there are two traumatic events that happened. And both of that, the first event that happened seriously, the second event happened because.
Margaret, Margaret, I need you to wrap it up and bring it back for the evaluation because I think if we all sat and spoke all of our evidence, we might be here for a really long time.
You know, listen to me.
I, I do not. So just, essentially you're providing evidence of how you, the evidence that you use to create the evaluation for Dr. Door. Is that like your.
Okay. Okay, the hiring, you know what, she hired a nurse. I, then I, then I tend to talk about, I have attended, I think it only means seven one. Okay, um, and so it's very concerned about communication and um, family meetings. And, and I'm just telling you, having been to family meetings, they have often been the same, as a matter of fact, last night, someone.
Margaret, we're, we're, we're off topic here. So I need you to sort of bring it back and maybe very succinctly to say. For this is the evidence that I used to create her evaluation.
What I have witnessed being at those meetings is Dr. Jordan is listening to people. She has said last night that she will continue to improve her communication and I think she's really tried to do that. And my communication, she has been direct and, and clear. Um, and um, she did both students, she did both families.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Karen.
Okay, so I'll um, speak to some of the evidence that I wrote. Um, I, safety, we have done a lot without a doubt. Um, the only thing I heard from a couple of um, parents was on the buses, we need to see if we can do something. With, I, I, I would never want to be a bus driver because who knows what's going on out there. Um, and as far as um, the D E I B goal. Um, one thing I found was amazing that I bet every kid in this district can now tell you that Wampa Noah meets people of first life. Because they have learned, I mean, the, the connection that we've made and with them is great. Um, and the Kager Museum next to Eastbound the School, the kids went there. I'm not sure if all the other um, grades around town have to go there. Um, and, but that's that. Restorative justice is also part of D E I B. And teachers have said that it, it's, it's still not smooth enough. They don't feel comfortable with it. And a quote that I thought was really important, I went into Pippertime. One day and there were sixteen high school kids there and they said, kids quote unquote, get away with stuff. So, um, I think. Um, you know, maybe we could tweak, tweak that a little bit. Maybe from some of the money we're going to get married for those mandates, right? Um, anyway, so that needed some work. Um, collaboration with school committee, um. And the parents and the teachers, it's this disturbingly lacking up here. Um, we've had incidents where decisions have been made without input from all the parties involved. So. Um, we're, we're hoping to build on that, um, building collaboration. I thought one thing that might help things make more clear. We hear a lot that teachers can't, don't really feel comfortable to speak about how they really feel about. For example, a PD, they didn't maybe think it was really concrete, but. I, there's a manual that lists all the PDs in the district. But the manual doesn't say who went to those things. So, and I believe there's um. You could count how many people go there. And then I thought I heard a teacher who came to one of the meetings say that. There's a summary after, and so if we could just get what the um, results of that summary are. I'm hoping that's anonymous because um, that, that just makes them appear. But I also think the school committee has a part in getting this collaborative information too is. I don't think we should have to ask somebody to produce it every month. We could go and look at the records. I hope they were anonymous, but it would be data.
Karen, would you like to share one more comment? If I mean, can sort of open up to other people?
Sure, okay. Um, communication has been, uh, I listed a whole bunch of reasons why, but. It, it's, it's been really hard. The thing that bothers me about it is that people have gotten angry. But I think we can do things working with Lori, like um, making a weekly, what's our monthly, what's on chat newsletter. And another way I think that school committee can. Um, work more to get this at a better state is we have a communication goal subcommittee. And I don't know that we did enough this year. So I think next year we should have one need to be information parents and one. For parents and staff and one be for listening. So we offered information that we have because. That's another thing, people don't understand what all the terms mean. Like minutes isn't in how many hours, seconds or minutes and hours. Committee meetings, minutes, and you can learn a lot from that. So anyway, just some.
Great, thank you, Tom. Any other questions or comments?
I'll try to keep it general. Um. You know, I, I think it's important to look at these things and anytime you do a, it's, it's a performance evaluation. And, you know, anytime you do something like this, you, you need to look at. Um, you know, good things and successes throughout the year. Um, you know, things that have been done very well. You need to look at the goals and progress that's been made towards those goals. And then, um, it, it, it wants people to understand that. It is okay and it is a natural part of doing an evaluation to also look at them and say, you know what, maybe we're not there right now. Maybe there, something didn't quite go as, as you planned. And, and a lesson learned and how to, how to do better the next year. I, I myself, you know, have been in performance evaluations where. You know, I thought I had done a great job and then I, I sit in the sergeant's office and he's walking through things and, and he said, well, you know, here's some areas for improvement. And, and initially I'm like. But then you look at it, okay, I, I get that, I get that. And, and Margaret, you're, you're right. Our job is to build on our superintendent. You, you don't build something by not taking lots and putting them, you build. And so, and, and so there, there are going to need to be times where, um, you know, things are great. And there are going to be times where things are, we're, we're doing well, we're, we're crucial. And there are going to be times where, um. You know, you know what, maybe, maybe here, here's something that we can, we can tweak and we can continue to build. Um, and, and we talked a lot about professional development and nobody, nobody is completely done wrong, right? Uh, nobody's done wrong. Michael Jordan practiced free throws all the time. Um, so, uh, you know, I just want folks to understand in, in, in here, but also who we're looking at in evaluation. Um, you know, if, if everything isn't on the right side, it says exceeded, 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 that's not necessarily a bad thing. That's part of a growth process. Um, and I'll, I'll leave it there.
Leah. Um, so I, I, I do want to read my just kind of overarching comments to. For Dr. Dor's on evaluation, but I want to um, preface it with. Like what Bill is saying, that there's an opportunity here for growth. And I think I tried very hard for my years of working. Um, as a school committee member to, to, to try to be as supportive as I can um, with you, Dr. Dor, as you're moving forward and um. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this, but I also want to acknowledge that a lot of work has been done over the last few weeks. Um, with Dr. Dor, with your communication and your outreach. And so. Just saying, I think that I really appreciate that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this and um. So Dr. Dor has made significant progress on her goals this year. Her goals for the school district are aligned with the budget request for FY twenty-four. And there is ample evidence of the progress made to support an increase in school safety and security in pursuit of equitable. Academic and social emotional outcomes for all students. Dr. Dor worked hard on making significant progress on her goals this year. And I want to acknowledge what I've said about significant progress, that we have multi-year goals. For me, this was that net. You know, so I'm just saying, I'm not here. Um, however, I feel focus moving forward needs to be on transparent communication and building trust with stakeholders. Dr. Dor works diligently to have consistent opportunities, um, or Dr. Dor works. Sorry, diligently to have consistent opportunities for stakeholders to provide feedback. But something is not working. I believe that Dr. Dor can put herself out there more, not just by attending and hosting events, but instead by showing who she is. And I've seen that come out. Um, and what her functions are. Gather all stakeholder input prior to announcing new initiatives and ask for advice and support when needed. She will be able to build trust within the community. It is apparent to me that many families do not feel trust within our public schools right now. And we need a superintendent to take on this as the most important role. And I do believe you can do that.
Well, I'll start by saying that this is sort of, we've run three hundred and forty-eight that I would not want to be a superintendent. And that is to be evaluated in. It's an important process to get feedback, but boy, I would not want somebody commenting on all my flaws. Do that behind my back. I also wanted to say that when I was doing this evaluation, um, I wanted to make sure. That I wasn't getting caught up in confirmation bias, you know, that listening to and collecting those examples and information that support my already. Established new points or beliefs. That's why, you know, going back through this. Um, for the public, we call them the yellow folders that we get for every meeting that provides the evidence. Because it's so easy, this is a year, right? Also full year to go back and look at those things and jog your memory about. Um, how they align to the goals and those indicators. Um, and I try to be really careful about not taking anecdotes and making them representative. Even those anecdotes that I get from people who stop me in various places, I try to ask questions of them. To see if there's something deeper that we can, you know, work on, um, and, and make it, um, something that. Get that progress, like what we're talking about. Um, I feel like as a school committee member, you quickly realize that the public only see the fraction of what goes on. Um, on a daily basis in the schools. Um, and you know, we have three thousand students, wide variety of needs. Um, there are fires that are being put out every day. Um, I didn't really comprehend that until I was on inside the tape. And so I'm always trying to keep that in mind when you're saying, on top of that, we're trying to make progress in all these other new areas. Um, so some of my comments that you guys will have um, in front of you in um, my evaluation. In, and I, I guess I wanted to start out by saying that I'm completely confident. Um, that Dr. Dor has a really strong commitment to found the schools. A clear belief in equity and belonging. And she's really trying to achieve that school culture that'll create a place for all students to feel safe. And be able to learn as they're up on themselves. Um, I also see regularly an incredibly strong work ethic. Um, that might be actually to the problematic end of the spectrum. You need to take some time and point yourself to, so that you can continue to be refreshed. Um, and continue on your commitment to solving problems. Um, I, we notice continuing opportunities for students, they just continue to increase. Um, that's very obvious. Um. The, the one area um, that I wrote significantly about, and I know we all just got these, so you, you probably all haven't had a chance to really look at that. Um, is that communication is probably the most important thing. And, and it's come up from probably everybody here saying that. And if we had um, any company that was as large as our district, with as many stakeholders, you would have somebody dedicated to communication. Taking on that role. And we're sort of asking that on top of everything that we're already doing. So I'm, you know, seriously advocating that we find some way to really put. Um, resources toward that because we know it's critically important. Um, it's something that I have met with Dr. Dor about regularly. Um, I have seen many things that she has implemented, different ways of, um. Different ways of communicating and we can all have a, a decision on whether or not they were successful. But sometimes you have to try things and be willing to do something in a different way. Um, so the feedback has always been taken. Uh, some alternative ways were when um, income was again toured on a school, that's communication. And that is a very different way of doing it. Could have sent them a memo or an email with information, but taking them through the schools. That made a difference. Um, town meeting, same thing, um, just trying to reach people in a different way and seeing that. Sort of universal support for our school regularly there. So, um. That said, there's definitely more areas that can be worked on, but I've only ever seen um, receptivity in trying to make that, those changes and, and build in those areas.
Uh, I'm just gonna um, read some of the highlights so I don't name. Um, so as is usually the case for all of my evaluations, I'm pretty consistent and I am very conservative in my assignment of highest. Of the highest markings. However, Dr. Dor continues to meet and exceed my expectations and is leading the district in the right direction. She demonstrates a true belief in meeting every student where they are and that every student can experience success. And then the other section I want to read is about um, my exceeded or whatever, the highest one. For um, the fiscal management piece. Uh, Dr. Dor exceeded my expectations and the development of additional fiscal knowledge over the past year. She embraced the changes in our staff, both at the town and in-house as an opportunity to become more hands-on in the budgetary process. She has ridden to the occasion by, by becoming more involved in operations and fiscal management and building. A more in-depth understanding of forecasting, grant management and the related town policies and procedures. Um, and we saw evidence of that with a really smooth budget process this year. And um, with our items for, for our capital request items that were not even part of the capital plan, still getting approved at town meeting, which is awesome. Um, some of the issues and needs that she has taken on as goals are far more than anyone could accomplish in one, two, or even three years. But I believe we are continuing to move forward and make significant progress. So thank you, Dr. Door, for, um, for a release exactly here.
I need to cut, listen. I just, uh, not going to read my comments. I, I feel like, um, I don't, I, I don't want to. But what I do want to say is I have full faith that Dr. Dor is uh, fully committed to town. I think that. Like Bill said, it's okay to not always be um. On the highest end of things because how do you grow? And. Like policy, we always say policy is a live document. This job is a live. Experience. Um, so that being said, I think that. It's a, it's a, it's a growing year. We are learning a lot. We are learning it together. We are a united front moving forward and. We're going to support our superintendent so that she's the best superintendent that she can be for us. And I know we can do it and we're going to get through it together.
And with that being said, is there a motion for the superintendent's summative evaluation? I feel like someone, okay, Bill, is there a second? Okay, so I'll favor to accept the superintendent's summative evaluation. Say aye. I do want to make one just.
I do want to make one just comment on that, any background information for overall evaluation available from the district's record keeper on their. Um, that superintendent updates.
And thank you for the evaluation, thank you for the, uh, I believe that I was the process may appreciate will be that. Um, I also um appreciate the agreement and acknowledgement of. Instructional leadership and the management of this district um across the board. Um, I also recognize that you're unified in the uh communication. And I hear that and I accept that, and we can, I can, I stop here, I can always improve um with the uh communication. And I hear that, uh, moving forward, uh, I want to make that as my uh professional goal for next year, my professional one goal. And the district-wide um goal for next year, and really concentrate on the the communication. I hear what you're saying and um and we need to get better, so I want to make that um. Uh, moving forward, I also, I know there's some concern about the um. The social emotional and and that was discussed a lot tonight, and I just want to say to all the counselors. All the staff, that. That whatever my evaluation is, is not reflective of what's going on in this district. Um, I appreciate everything. That everyone does. Um, and committed to the district, um, five years ago when I, um. When I came, I was thrilled to be here and I had committed myself um to the district. I feel like I reached like my ultimate goal in my career path was to be the superintendent of Fountain Club of Schools. I love it here, but five years later, I can actually say that I love it more. And I'm I'm really committed to to this community and to, and this is, this is where I want to be. So um, thank you for mentioning the commitment, I just wanted to reconfirm that.
Thank you. Okay, um, routine business approved minutes of April twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, is there a note? Second, second, um, any edits? I am in favor of approving the minutes, say aye. Staying, Margaret isn't staying. Committee member reports. I did, um, um, it's a failure report, it's just an acknowledgement, we have. Wonderful members who will not be at the table next time. Uh, because they have been ending their term and I just want to acknowledge um your commitment to the district. All the hours that you've spent, many of them with me at negotiations. And um and all that you have um that you've given to the district, that is a huge commitment, and you've all really done it beautifully. And um, you know, it's it's been a rocky time during your tenure because we hired superintendent and we survived COVID. And um in a very lengthy negotiation process and um doesn't go unnoticed, so we. Leah? Nowhere near all that you, I think, the, yeah, I just want to say, it's been a great five years, and. It'll be weird to see you from the other side, I definitely can tell that you're doing and just, you know, thank you all, and you all are so committed. And it is a lot of work, but you all pull through, so thank you so much for everything you do. Very, very nice. Um, any other committee member reports? Okay, um, follow-up information requests related to presentations. And since it's my last one, I make them.